Called meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the entire states of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's just a couple changes to the agenda, just adding an executive session to the end. And then, under the reorganization, there's, even though we listed everything here, there's a couple others that weren't named out, but they'll be part of it, like adopting the regular meeting schedule, where we're going to record it in what paper, and adopting select board rules and policies. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next is board reorganization, nominating a chair and a vice chair.
Does anyone do the minute?
Let's skip right over those. Motion to approve February 26, 2024, select board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you Bruce. Board reorganization, is there a nomination for a chair of the board?
I'd like to nominate Lisa.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, is there a motion to elect vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Bruce.
Second?
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's carry. Lisa, you are the chair. So I'm going to give you, just so you know, these are the ones that were on that list.
I highlighted them?
Yeah, okay.
And then this is for the executive session.
Sure. A motion to adopt a regular meeting schedule would be in order. The regular meeting schedule is the second and fourth Mondays at 6:00 at the town office.
So moved.
Motion by Albert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Designate.
In progress.
Designate three posting locations. We post at the town office, the post office, and the library. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Designate a newspaper for record. We did the, you did the Brandon Reporter once before, but usually if you're going to post something, you have to do it in the Herald just because the Herald runs on a daily, right?
Yeah, well, they don't run, they don't print daily.
Well, but we've, I know you had to repost things in the Herald.
We post most of our, like our bid openings and things like that in the Herald.
So those would be the options, the Reporter or the Herald?
Brandon Reporter.
What's your preference?
We had to go to the Herald because there were.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I feel like a lot of people I talked to lately rather read the Brandon Reporter than the Herald.
Yeah.
That there's more news in it than there is in the Herald. So I'm not opposed to being back in Brandon again. You know, if we do go out for bids, we like to publicize it as much as possible anyway, so we could do the Herald, but.
A motion would be in order.
Motion to make it, be the Brandon Reporter.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Adopt the select board rules and policies. I don't know if you have that in front of you. There are select board rules for the meeting. Everyone has seen. Are you comfortable adopting those at this meeting?
Sure.
A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. Mr. Carney?
Well, just here to.
Mr. Jawzak?
I would like to know, since it was a mile into this one, what is the town group doing? I mean, at least they're not kicking on anybody. But the Pride and Joy Proctor, they get the triangle. And five times, we can't get the signs straight. Am I missing some?
The signs that are tilted? That's the way the state put those signs up.
Who?
The state.
No, we're supposed to take care of it.
The state put those signs up.
They put them up, what we got, who puts them up?
Are you talking about the signs that say coming over, that to come over the bridge? Are those the signs you're talking about?
No, they're the triangle.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. The two signs that say, that are, that's.
The town put them up last time. The state put them up, the bridge, no, they block out.
And they were put up at an angle. The state put them up at an angle. They were, we had that conversation when they first were put up. There's one on the front lawn of the library. That's the same way, so.
I mean, it don't look like, I'll be honest with you.
Well, that would be a state conversation, so.
And also, the keys are still being left in the trucks. I don't, I brought that up another time. The keys should not be left in the truck, no matter where they are. It should not be left in the truck. And coming in the Proctor by the Proctor sign, you know, the marble sign?
Yes.
There's a tree down there, it's been there since first of the year. That's a small one, it's laid out across.
It actually just came down with the last storm because I went down and picked up pieces of it, so. I'm sure that that will be cleaned up as soon as we get ready to do stuff down there. I'll make sure that that gets cleaned up.
So do they have a work schedule or do they just do what they want?
So at the next meeting, there will be a report from Kyle. There's a report at the second meeting of every month. It's a pretty detailed report. If you'd like a copy of that, we could, we'll make sure that you have a copy of it at the next meeting.
And do they punch the clock at 6:30 and get done at 2:30? Do they punch the clock or they write in their time?
They write in their time sheets.
They write in their time? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, guests. We have no guests this evening. Good stuff. Any good stuff? Budget passed, school board budget passed. I'm going to say that's good stuff from my perspective. We had a pretty good turnout of people to come out and vote. I think that that's, that's nice to see also.
Albert and you on four, that's nice. In my book, it is.
And I think we had a productive, it was, it was a productive town meeting. It was a pretty good turnout, about 60 people. So it's unfortunate that that number has gone down significantly since COVID. It, I mean, I can remember a time when the bleachers would have been full and half the floor. So it'd be nice to see us get back to that. So maybe we're growing a little bit towards that. We'll have to see about getting the school back involved and having kids come and participate as well for credit too. I think that would be good for the civic minded, so. All right. Moving on to highway. Oh, I'm going off this.
Okay.
I was like, we never did.
I thought there was a method to your madness about.
I was like, oh, because she gave me that. I was like, and then I'm like, oh, 2021, probably.
It's probably good anyway because there's a lot listed there if you wanted to jump ahead to the other things, but.
Yeah. So we have all these appointments. If you want, we could read the appointments all out loud and do it as one motion. We can do them each as an individual motion. What's the pleasure of the board?
Either a couple that we need to find a nominee for.
It looks like for Tree Warden and there was, um, there was another one I thought for an alternate, for Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
If we did them with one motion, could we include the discussion on those two? Or we would have to have those as separate?
We could do those separate if you'd like. And do we need to include, maybe at my agenda as well, but should it be Dick Horner and Tom Hogan?
Yes, I have them both in here.
Okay.
Separate, they're separate. Tom's first and then Dick is right after him.
But they're both four-year terms, right?
Yes. No, they're both one year. Oh yeah, he's four, he's done, he's one, yeah.
All right. So a motion would be in order to appoint the select board to serve as the water and waste and sewer commissioners for a term of one year. Do you want me to read them all or do them separately?
I'm fine with reading them all, but.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right. To appoint Lisa Wright to serve as the assessor for a term of one year. To appoint Don Russell to serve as constable for a term of one year. To appoint Tom Hogan to serve on the planning commission for a term of four consecutive years. To appoint Dick Horner to serve on the planning commission for a term of four consecutive years. To appoint Megan Canucci to serve on Park and Rec Committee for a term of two consecutive years. To appoint Amanda Duchesne to serve on the Parks and Rec Committee for a term of two consecutive years. To appoint Kevin Bongi to serve as emergency management chair and Bruce Boucher as emergency management member for a term of one year. To appoint Mary Prigosi to serve as the town representative to the Proctor Free Library for a term of three years. To appoint Carrie Covin to serve as a Rutland County Solid Waste District representative and Kyle Thornton as the alternative, alternate for the term of one year. To appoint Bruce Boucher to serve as regional transit council representative and Kyle Thornton as the alternate for a term of one year. To appoint Josh Webb to serve as 911 coordinator for a term of one year. To appoint Bruce Boucher, Tom Hogan, and Albert Winter as two voting and one alternate representatives to the OCW Board of Trustees. To appoint Albert Winter as cemetery commissioner for a term of three years. A motion would be in order to appoint as presented.
Motion to appoint as presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the two that are left are Judy Frazier to serve as Rutland Regional Planning Commission representative and then an alternate. Is there someone here that would like to serve as the alternate?
What does that entail Judy?
They meet monthly and then often they have other events that take place and it's just doing them. Right now, you can do it, it's a hybrid, so you can either go to the meeting or do it online. And they're usually seven, their agenda goes seven to like 8:30, seven to 9:00. And if the board member doesn't want to, I can also go to the planning commission to see if anybody on the planning commission would want to. Or actually, anybody in the town can also put their name forward.
Okay.
Be appointed, so it's.
So you want to just wait on that until the next meeting then?
Sure, if no one's interested in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Tree Warden, so we could put something on the website to see if anyone's interested in that as well?
We could, or last year was Nick.
Yeah, so he not want to do it again?
Um, well, we could reappoint him, I'm sure he'd be fine.
Okay. But if anyone else would like to be Tree Warden, you could contact Judy.
Definitely, yes. And also, this might be a good time to also mention to everybody, just because we're on, about the vacant seat that we have for the board.
Yes.
For the board, that people can send in a letter by the 50th and then we're going to meet on the 20th, so.
All right. Moving on for discussion and action items. Everyone's gone through and signed the bills?
Yes.
Yes.
Review and approve the GPI's revised proposal for South Street sidewalk.
So all they did was, they made a couple changes because something that they noted within it made a lump sum for travel and the other engineer firm didn't like that. So they just went out and they broke it up and said, as needed. So it made it look like they weren't just taking $1,500 out of the contract and if they didn't come, you know, they still get paid. So they, they have to, for reimbursement, have to supply receipts and everything for us. So that was the only change.
So you need a motion for that or just an explanation because are you re-signing a contract?
I will be signing the contract, yes, once they, once they make that change. It's approved by you guys.
Okay. So a motion would be in order to authorize Judy to sign the contract once the change has been made by GPI.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve assessors' conversion to Patriot software for reappraisals.
So this was something that the assessor's office asked me to do, just looking, and she wanted this ahead of it. We haven't really finalized the contract yet with Taylor as far as doing the reappraisal in town. But this needs to kind of get approved so that we can get it implemented and put on the computer prior to all of that, so. And it's pretty much something that they have to do in order to make it compatible across the board, so.
And do we have an idea what that cost is going to be?
She was waiting for a final cost on, I'm trying to think of what they gave us as an estimate. It was like 2,500 for the software, so. But what we have right now would be comparable to what is needed going forward with the reappraisal.
So a motion would be in order to approve the Patriot software update for reappraisals for the assessor.
So moved.
Motion by Linda, second?
Second.
Second by Bruce, any discussion?
Or, when we had the discussions earlier, there was some talk about other towns in the area that we're going to coordinate with, you know, Proctor and.
Right.
That's still.
Yes, yes. Pollitt, Chittenden, so far.
But that doesn't have any, that's not going to change the price for this.
No, no, that, that's with the appraisal company.
Right.
He's going to, they're going to do all those locations.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Quotes for a new John Deere tractor with mower deck.
So I included that and they actually went out and got three quotes and all of them were identical because I guess John Deere basically says, this is what you can charge and this is what you pay. So not like one, or one business can't give them a better price. They also did go to the, was it the Kubota? And that price was much higher than the one John Deere gave them, so.
And how old is the tractor that we currently have, do you know?
Oh, I want to say it's like 17 years, 20, 17 to 25 years old. It's pretty old.
Different, yeah, 17 to 25.
So in the price that, like, they've been asked what they could get for it, it's about $250, so.
The tractors with $250?
Yeah, the one we currently have. That was, that's what they would get for it if they were to sell it out, like auction it off.
That's what John Deere pre-sold for?
No, that's what, if we go to this auction site.
Yeah.
To get rid of equipment, that's what Kyle said that they would get for it.
Really?
Yes.
Does it run?
Does it run? Yes.
It's $250.
But it, but they might keep it, they're going to see if they can keep it.
I hope so. I'll give it to you.
Just does it back.
So what do we use the tractor for? Roadside mower?
This is for, mostly for, a lot for embankments.
Yep.
Because of the hills and stuff that they do, it can go on, on hillsides without tipping.
Yeah.
So that's why they, they use it mostly for that. I mean, they have the zero turn too, but that can't, you can't use that there.
So does this have the thing that goes over the guardrails to cut?
No, that's a totally different piece of equipment. We're actually looking into getting one of those or renting one of those to do so that they can do along the highways.
So when you say tractor, is this like?
It's like a riding mower, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. With a deck on it.
When I think tractor, I think tractor.
Oh. Sorry.
I think for a girl, tractor.
It's a series, it's a tractor, but it's got a mower deck on it, so.
Oh, okay.
And they priced them with the deck and they priced them separate and it's pretty much the same, so.
Yeah.
So that seems like a really expensive piece of equipment just to have for that, doesn't it? I mean, how, how many like embankments do we have?
Well, I mean, in the summer, that's what they spend lots of time doing is mowing, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, they have a lot of area to mow. And we're taking over some of the mowing too, like I guess we outsource Holden and we're going to do that ourselves too, so.
Yeah, but that's, he mows out with the zero turn. The person in.
Oh, yeah, it does occur, yeah, yeah.
So.
If this one dies, they have nothing to mow.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, like, so like, when you mow the park over here, you mow the hill with a different piece of machinery than you mow the flat piece of?
No, they mow it with the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Now, they're mowing simultaneously, right? There's usually two people mowing?
Yeah, a lot of times.
Yeah.
If we only had one tractor, could the mowing that's done during the week be done by one person in one week's time?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that, I'd have to talk to them. Plus, we, I mean, we need the other mower, so. I mean, we already have the other mower, so. And that one would, like I said, would mow the one that this tractor would with the mowing deck.
Lisa, I would like to know how many hours on that tractor? And really, how many times?
Something that has hours of it.
Yes, it does, it has hour of here. And how many times do you really use it? Do you use it a week, a year? Or do you use it every day? Or what's really what it's being used for? Because most of the time I see the zero turn doing the side roads.
Could we just like see a map for the next meeting to see like where, where that mower would be used?
Sure.
Thank you.
Because this quote will still be good till the end of this month, right?
Um, it said 30 days. Yeah, it should be, and, I mean, I think the reason for getting it so soon is to get it here before.
But I mean, if you drive by John Deere, they've got a million mowers out, so. Maybe Kyle could come to the next meeting and just like let us know about, talk to us about mowing.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. That way you could answer everybody's questions.
Because especially if we're going to be down a person, I mean, have we thought about, is it more advantageous for us to see about hiring out the mowing? If we're, because we're down a person, right? And we haven't, you haven't made that decision to.
To replace them.
Yeah. Because that seems like if you're going to have, like, two people mowing one day a week during the summer, that kind of seems like a waste of a day since that's our time to do all the projects we have going on and we think about the number of projects we have, so. And I don't know, I mean, I know there was a time when, you know, we used to hire, like I can remember the Allen Boys used to mow for us in town or Sarah Patch mowed for, for us. So I don't know if those are things we want to.
I mean, I think honestly, your only opportunity, if you outsourced it, would be to go through somewhere like Grass dogs or something like that because we can't, you can't find kids willing to do the work they used to 10 years ago.
Yeah, we have several kids in town that have mowing businesses though, so. It might be a possibility, I, I mean, I don't know. It just, if you, if we're not going to replace someone, right? And I don't know, maybe, maybe you are, I don't know, I haven't had that discussion. So if you're down a person and we know it takes, we're saying two people to mow one day a week, then that only leaves you four days to do a project. We know they generally mow during the middle of the week. So I'm just saying, like, it, it seems like a viable option just to, just to discuss.
Like, for example, like the park, the park gets mowed like every Thursday.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, like they have a schedule of what they mow every, every week, every day.
Right.
So I know like that's taken care of. And one person, pretty much the person who left, did the majority of the mowing.
Right.
So, so I mean, I don't know if they would, you know, some people, sometime they mow and somebody trims. So it's, you know, they're going to have to reschedule the way they operate if they don't replace that person, if we don't choose to replace that person, at least immediately.
Right. Well, maybe if I come to the next meeting and we just, and we look at the, well, if we just look on the town map, what it is that we're going to mow, then we could just.
Okay, yeah.
Make a more informed decision.
We did go through a spring schedule and stuff, so.
Yeah, so that would, that would, seems like it plays right into place.
And if you want to just throw it out there, because to Lisa's point, as far as like students, I know there's a couple, like there's a boy on my street that I think would be very interested in taking, maybe, you know, not the whole, but take a portion of the town and, and have him responsible. It's him and one of his friends be responsible for one portion of the area that would help cut down. I mean, it's just something to throw, to run by Kyle.
We have an insurance question.
I was just going to say, yeah, you've got to look at, you know, how many hours are they putting in? Are we covering for insurance?
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that.
Well, they would be temporary, it's no different than being a lifeguard or something. You'd be a summer employee.
Right.
So it's no different than when we hire kids at school to paint or something like that, so.
But we have to find someone that does a riding mower, not, you know, hand mowers and stuff.
Right.
Yeah, but I think there's, maybe we ought to look to VLCT and just check because I think there was a question of.
Liability or something?
Yeah, with.
Right, yeah.
Well, other towns hire high school kids to do it, so I can't imagine that Pittsburgh's any different than us. And they used to hire, they hired kids and Rutland does too during the summer, so.
Plus, I'd like Kyle's intake on it too.
Yes. Yeah, let's talk with Kyle.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, even if you just hired kids to do like the pool and stuff like that, you know? So.
Yeah. Yeah, because like the city, I don't think, they don't hire summer help for mowing.
No, it's all.
They have the parks and the rest do it.
Yeah.
But lots of towns do, so, and we used to do it here.
Yeah, I'd forgotten about that.
Yeah, let's, let's check with VLCT.
Yep.
And talk with Kyle.
Well, I, I just don't want to hear, like in the fall, we couldn't do projects because we were mowing. That, that's not going to bode well for us, you know?
Oh, I know.
So. Okay, so we'll talk to Kyle and look at a map for mowing at the next meeting, so. Board of Water Commission, do we have anything for Board of Water or Sewer? Do we need to go into those?
No, there's no updates on either of those.
Okay, so next meeting we'll have, or April meeting we'll have delinquents?
Yes.
April?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I made the list for you by the next meeting in March, because it'll be in April, so, yeah.
Okay. Sheriff's report? Any questions about that?
It was pretty short.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually called him and asked him why there were certain days missing and he said he could, they're actually down to like two sheriffs.
Yeah, they had a couple.
They had two leave.
Yeah, and then retire.
And then one was out with the flu for that week, so he said that could have an impact, so.
Well, Lisa wore some lines on there, so. Town manager report?
All right, so the bid was posted for South Street sidewalk construction. We had a pre-bid conference meeting on March 6th. Bids are due for the construction company on the 20th of March. The next. The next, um, we had three contractors show up for the pre-bid conference, which doesn't mean, I mean, there still could be six construction companies that bid on it, but these three came. So, um, it was Ricky Reed's son, Markowski, and Beldon. So, they will be here on the twentieth to open bids that come in, and then the board will have them in front of them for the twenty-sixth.
Could you imagine if we were doing the entire sidewalk, how long we'd be doing, it seems like this project's taken?
It, it has, and it's, it's great, we're getting grant money, but you don't get grant money without jumping through a million hoops, and it shows just in this, I mean, we already hired our third engineer for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now we're hiring the construction.
Yeah.
So. I think we may wanna look at how we do phase two, possibly differently if we can, but. I mean, definitely needs to get some type of grant money, but something, you know.
Well, even if you give grant money just for the planning phase, because that way you have it all kind of engineered and like that, so.
Yeah, this was a little bit much, so.
I mean, like you have to have a consult, I, I mean, it, it just seems like everybody has their hand out to get paid, because it's all grant funding.
And I feel the, the engineering firms are all well-equipped to handle the whole project, you know, but I don't know why they.
They like, it's, it's like they wanna spread it around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if you notice up here on the sidewalk, um, the, uh, cement barriers that are there blocking the sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's cause rocks are falling off that cliff.
Yeah.
So, we're in the process of trying to get ahold of the property owner as well. Um, part of it is, you know, set way back, but I think it just keeps deteriorating. So, they've put that there just to keep people from walking back and forth on it, so.
So what's the timeframe for that, that you allow, or wait to contact them?
Oh, we've been trying to reach them already.
No, but I mean, until we do something, because it becomes a safety issue.
Um, well, they're liable for it if it's deep into their property, so it's just us getting ahold of them. I did actually talk to the project manager today for that property.
Oh.
Um, not regarding that piece of it though, regarding another issue, but, um, so he's planning on coming up here at some point, and he's gonna stop in, so. I'm addressing more what they're gonna do with the building up there.
Yeah.
And we can have this conversation, but for now, um, we've had somebody kinda look at it to see what you could do, and you could actually dig into it, and then put, um, cores and then netting, so when the rocks do fall, they get caught and they don't roll into the road and stuff. But once you've gone, say, four feet in, you've probably gotta go another ten feet in to really dig that out into landscape and stuff, so it doesn't keep happening.
Right.
And that's a big rock runoff too there.
Probably three years.
Yeah, I mean, when Joe Manning was on the board, he brought it to the attention of everyone then, and it was kinda poo-pooed at the time.
Well, now it's bad, so.
Yeah, so like once you speak to the project manager then about that, what's the timeframe for, um, them having a plan in place? Because the sidewalk is ours, so it becomes a safety issue. We're coming into summer, we can't like have, we shouldn't be directing people into the street, right?
Right.
So, how, what's our timeframe for saying to them, like, made you aware of this issue? Within four weeks, six weeks?
Well, I would like to get an answer from them, like within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then, you know, deciding, I have a feeling, I don't know how much they're gonna put into it, or, you know, say, oh my God, we'll get right on top of that and take care of it, or it's gonna be left to us.
None of that is, like where Lenways lived, that house that sits above?
Yeah.
No, it's the property to the marble building. It goes behind the marble building all the way there, all the way down to the five-way.
Hmm.
That's part of theirs. It's Vermont Marble before, Omia.
Now, does the right-of-way create an issue?
Well, usually a right-of-way, I mean, of the right-of-way would say the cliff's right on the right-of-way, but usually the right-of-way is you use it to go if you have to fix something, that's, like say a pipe's broken, you have the right to go on there. This is more of an issue of, it's dangerous, it's another property owners that owns the property, and how can we work with them to make sure it's real?
But for them to construct something on a town right-of-way, would they have to give permission from the town to do that?
Yeah, I mean, would, they would have to dig so far back that it would obviously be part of our right-of-way, but it would impact any access we had, you know, the way that, the way it was explained to me from a construction company, how they would do it, or should do it. And hopefully the town won't have any problem with them doing it.
Yeah, but, yeah, there was, uh, questions on that, as I remember.
I know it's bad in the winter even, cause there's so much water runoff that it just freezes and there's just ice there and it's shaded.
Okay, so can we, um, have that listed as an agenda item for the next meeting?
Yep.
Just for, to keep it on the table.
Lisa, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can we put the snow fence up here on that walkway, because I know there's the kids that are gonna walk right through there.
Well, we're, we're gonna wait till we speak to the project manager and see what they're gonna do. Well, we'll see, a snow fence isn't gonna hold the rocks.
We'll look into it with it.
So at the next meeting, we'll, we'll hopefully have some report from.
Are you talking a snow fence on those rocks, or the, this?
Yeah.
The kids are gonna walk, kids are kids, kids are gonna walk.
Oh, you mean put a snow up?
They're gonna walk the sidewalk, they're just gonna do it because they're kids.
I know, but you can't get through, cause there's so many barriers, you have to avoid walking. So, I think that was the best solution.
Yeah, no, no, I think it is, and hopefully the next meeting we'll have a report from them, from the project manager of that building, so.
Um, a meeting with, um, Kyle next week to discuss spring projects and the paving. Um, we've already got that done, and we're working on fiscal, the next following year too of streets to do and stuff, so, and prioritizing those. Um, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that I've sent letters to residents on Kane Street for the ordinance, uh, the nuisance ordinance for their properties and kind of what they, the debris they have in their yards, um, spilling into other people's properties and things like that, so, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that, and sending them.
How many letters is that?
Three.
And those are dated, they have a, uh, it runs on a clock, right?
Yes, yes, so as soon as I issue them. Which will be this week.
Okay.
Um.
And when we talk about paving, we haven't done it in some time, I've noticed, but we used to do, um, seal crack, you know, where they come with the hose, and like if you had a crack, like up in our neighborhood, let's say, because we had just been paved, and there's a crack, they would come and they would seal it, it would kinda look like it was, um, it looks like it's asphalt or whatever, seal, crack.
Right, I know, you talk those.
Is that what it's called?
Well, it's.
Crack sealing, maybe I'm saying that backwards.
Right, yeah.
But that's just to keep the moisture out, water out, so they can go through the freeze.
So we haven't done that in, in quite some time, and I'm just wondering if that's something we should be looking into, since we have paved streets, and some of the streets we have paved do have cracks, if that's something we need to be putting together with our paving schedule?
When you say it hasn't been done, are you saying like in the last few months, or last three years, or?
Last three years, probably longer than that.
Yeah.
Last time we did it was on West Street.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, on West Street, right, like the, the south end?
Yes.
When I was on the board, we did it on West Street, just pick out the seal and they blow it out, paint it out, and they put it.
Yeah, I know we haven't done it in quite some time, but I was just wondering why.
Hey, well, I'll mention it to Kyle when I meet with him.
Okay.
It's been done on Main Street.
Yeah.
That cracks in.
Yeah, we used to do it kinda every place, it was kind of like a maintenance item.
I think Pittsburgh, I think they rent the equipment and they do it themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if we're down one, we probably can't do that, till we get, you know, then you get into flagging and.
Well, well, maybe that's another conversation we could have with Kyle when it comes. Thank you.
Um, okay, just skipping down, um, we, I was supposed to have a meeting today with the State of Vermont in Zion, and it was canceled because one of the employees from the State of Vermont lost power with a storm, so he couldn't do it. So it's rescheduled to Friday at noon.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Finishing up the transfer station recertification, I got an email today, we're waiting on a deed um, for the transfer station, and also, um, there is some verbiage in there about scrapping, um, food waste, and it says that there has to be like alternatives, so they have implemented the ham's farm as a place to, you know, bring food scraps. Casella said that that's not offered to us, but that's something that they could consider doing in the future. So she was just reaching out to the person she works with on how to word the recertification to get it passed through, so.
Okay.
Cause there was a lot in there that was very old, um, that certification had things that we were open still like eight to, eight to one every day and stuff like that, so they had to make a lot of little, like changes in hours and stuff like that, so.
Yep.
So they'll get that to me, um. I contacted Alderson in Burlington for the asbestos reporting. He called back, he was actually out of the country when he called me, but he said he's gonna schedule a visit, um, as soon as he returns to go up to the House on West Street. So, and he can do that, um, through the final report for us, so. It was actually less than the other one I contacted for, so. And he said he has done work here, like you mentioned, so.
Yeah, if you let me know, I'd like to.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get that cleared up, um. Let's see. As I mentioned, I spoke with the property manager for the marble building up there, there was a, um, they had a frozen pipe, there was a leak in the building, so Kyle had to go up and shut the water off. But he said that they do have plans for, they've actually hired an asbestos, um, consultant and a architect to go look at the building to see what can be done, so.
Great.
So he said when he's in town, he'll meet up with me, so we can go over it, so. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that they're gonna do something with it. Um, Parks and Rec meeting Wednesday. I'm working on doing the fiscal twenty-five highway grant, and I need to complete the Vtrans grant assessment for the Agency of Transportation, and I couldn't do it till we appointed a chair tonight, cause that's part of the application, so. So I'm gonna be doing that tomorrow. Received a letter from Velco on transmission line inspections, they're actually gonna be using drones to do a lot of their inspections. So, they said they're contacting homeowners and stuff, I don't think we'll be impacted much, they're going all the way from Middlebury to West Rutland, um, using a drone, there might be some equipments, um, when they, if they have to go on a line with the, um, a UTV, um, just to get to some spots, but nothing, nothing major, no big equipment, things like that. So, they just wanted to give us a heads up, it was supposed to be in February, now I think they've pushed it back till April. Um, and I think that's it.
Um, could we have an update for Green Update at the next meeting?
Sure.
And we're gonna be open for Green Update down at the dump?
Yep. Uh, one more thing too, I just wanna mention, so, the, um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission reached out to me today because they wanted to, um, have a participation from people in the town, or a person from each town or something to go over the, um, Rutland regional plan. So they asked if I'd be interested, or if anybody else might be interested in doing so, and then they're gonna set a date once they have names. So, is there anybody here that would be interested in being part of that?
Are they giving us the plan ahead of time to look at?
Yeah, well, it's part, like when we did that survey and stuff, that, that's part of starting that whole strategic planning process. So, yeah, they'll give us a copy of the plan, they'll probably give you the current one too, the one that was previously done. And then I think it's more like meeting, going over it, brainstorming, and then having input from the towns and the county.
Is it going to only be in person, or is it hybrid also?
Uh, I don't. Let's see, I think it's gonna be a hybrid, they did, they've been doing all their meetings hybrid?
Okay, I wouldn't mind participating, I think there's some changes that need to be made for us.
Okay. So it looks like she might be trying to get something the week of the eighteenth.
Okay.
So just let me know what times you're available and I can reach out to her.
Yeah, it, it's better just let me know when it is, then I just make my.
Okay, all right, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, and then, so if the next meeting, we could just have, um, if we could have the information for Green Update, and if we could just see the um, doc stuff again, so if there's any kind of change we wanna make, so we can just get it out there to people?
Yep.
About prices or anything like that too. And then, um, if you can just remind us the number of containers we used, and if we had enough.
Right. Yeah, I think we had enough, I think our guidelines were a little different, and I don't think we had the, um, number of people that showed up originally when we.
Sometimes the spring clean is a little different than the fall clean, I've noticed.
Yeah, you might have more brush too and stuff from people.
Well, it looks like people are already starting to.
Hollow.
Yeah, or stack up.
Yeah.
One of the two, so.
And they'll have hazardous pickup too then, that.
Yeah, great. All right, anything else? Any other business?
No, I'm just gonna pass this out to each of you, this is regarding the Declaration of Inclusion that we had, um, signed previously, and just that they're having an event, and they've invited board members, committee members, um, so I'm just sharing.
Anything to add, or John?
The only thing I would bring up that was brought up several years ago, and Stan Wilbur trounced it to death, and I have no axe to grind with the highway department, none whatsoever. Would it make any sense to investigate outsourcing the highway department? And again, I have no axe to grind with these guys, but I'm, I'm, I run my business like you run your house on dollars and cents.
I remember, I feel like I remember, I was on the board then, I think, when you raised that, cause I.
Stan, Stan said absolutely not, which, it was none of his GD business to begin with, but that's meaner here and there. I, I, he, the, the statement was it makes no sense. What kind of statement is that? Uh, I don't know.
I'm not even sure how you, how would you start that, because you probably have to do like, so you'd have a different group for snow plowing, a different group for mowing, right?
Yeah.
And then you'd have a different, like.
Well, you probably would have at least one employee.
Yeah.
Okay. But the plowing is the big, important thing that they do. Most everything else, and you can answer this better than I can, don't you outsort the paving, um?
Treework.
Sidewalks, I, again, I don't know, ma- maybe it makes no sense.
Yeah, well, like on the West Proctor Road there, you know, they did the paving, but then we did the edges, Arman's did.
But that should have been in the contract, the paving, most of the paving I do, that's usually you fix, I have to fix the shoulders when I leave.
It wasn't in the contract, though.
No.
Well, we could, we could look into and see what, what that boils down to time-wise.
It may not make any sense.
Yeah. I mean, we could reach out to VLCT and see what their recommendation would be for something like that, for a direction to start.
Rollin' Town does it, don't they?
I think that's the only town round that does.
Well, they have a crew.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
But there's.
Okay, you have a, a, a public, is your area?
Yeah, I know. Well, we'd have to have water, I mean, I don't know, it's a, it's a deeper conversation than.
Yes, because they, they do the street sweeping, they, they clean out the culverts and manholes, they do exploratory digging when there's a leak over in the yards, I mean, all those things that, uh.
Yeah.
It would take.
I mean, because right now, our crew isn't necessarily like highway water and wastewater like it used to be years ago. It seems to me that it's more kind of co-mingled that, like, which makes sense, so if you need to go do a dig on West Street, everybody's going to do the dig, right? So, you're not, you don't have to hire it out, because you have, everybody can work on a project, so.
And plus we do have, like, we just, you know, put one guy in as the water commissioner, and one guy in as sewer commissioner. So they're part of public work, so if we got rid of them, we'd have to fill those positions, and I think that it would come at a much higher cost than what work they're doing.
Well, we did see with Simons that that didn't always bode so well for us, and I will just say, having to deal with them, sometimes I did not find them to be the most professional individuals.
Yeah.
I think you should look into it, ain't that hard, right?
No, I said, we could, we, we can contact VLCT and see if they could give us a direction to go and what, what that looked like, but, I mean, everyone's time has value, so if it's gonna be six hours looking into something, I, I mean, you, you've gotta balance what that is. I, I mean, you, you've gotta balance what that is on top of everything else you're doing, so. Yeah, I'm not saying that we're gonna have an answer for you at the next meeting or a future meeting, it, it's an ongoing conversation that we can look at.
Nope. No, I'm just saying, it's, it's so expensive.
All right.
It won't, it won't happen that quickly, probably, but, no.
So, well, we'd check out to VLCT and see what their, all right.
What time is that meeting on the twentieth for the sidewalk?
Oh, when the bids come in?
Yeah.
Um.
Is it two o'clock?
Two o'clock, yes.
Yeah.
And we have a meeting, actually, that night at four-thirty.
Yeah.
Special sidewalk.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the board, I, a motion would be in order to find that a premature general knowledge regarding the town's potential action of an outstanding appeal on water and sewer charges would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage because the select board risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses the appeal in public. Motion.
Motion.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we enter executive session to discuss the town's action to appeal and legal representation under the provisions of Title I, Section 313a1a of the Vermont Statute Act 655p.m. All right, thank you all very much for coming.